Okay, good evening, everyone.
Are we on mute?
I just turned on the mic.
I'm calling, but I just can't tell.
I just realized there is a setting for non-view.
Good evening. Sorry for the slight delay. We had some technical difficulties. I'd like to call the Board of Assessors meeting for the town of Stockbridge on October 14th, 2021 order. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing. So I would like to move that we open the public hearing in regard to an application received from Mackinac Real Estate Company LLC requesting the storage of 8,000 gallons of propane to be located at 6 Hawthorne Road, Stockbridge, and to waive the reading of the notice to be incorporated into the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Roll call.
Yeah. Aye. Patrick.
Aye, Roxanne. Chuck, can you hear us?
He's muted.
Chuck, you're muted.
He's got unmuted.
How's that?
There you go. Okay, Chuck, we're taking a roll call vote to open the public hearing.
Aye, Chuck.
All right, we're all set. So, the applicant, Kevin Lilly, is it? Would you like to present your application and what's involved?
Sure, I can do. So, my name is Kevin Lilly. I'm the Associate Director at Camp Mackinac, which is Mackinac Real Estate Operating Company. This is an application for mostly existing liquid propane that's on site currently with a quantity to be replaced from our May fire and a contingency buffer based on the consultation with Chief Garrett Foley that we incorporate into the application just as a contingency in case there is some reason for us to need to, you know, add a little bit of propane here and there. We don't need to continue to come back to the to the board to amend those applications and licenses. You know, we have currently 13 tanks with about 6,000 gallons on our site. For example, there's $1,000 gallons at our dining hall that operates our food service. We, as part of this, had Chief Vinnie come and inspect each of the tanks, created a site map, which was included in the meeting packet, and also had visual inspections by the chief, passed applying colors. And, you know, we wanted to just do right by what the regulation is. We've been there longer than the regulation, and we want to make it right so that the town knows what we have, the chief knows what we have, and we don't get into a situation like we've had since, you know, as of May, really. So, happy to take any questions, but, you know, that's the basis of the application.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition, or anyone with any questions at this point from the public? Hearing none. Do you have?
I have no questions. I talked to him earlier today.
All righty, well then, I am going to move that we close the hearing for deliberation of the board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, Patrick.
Aye, Chuck.
Aye, Roxanne. All righty, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Chuck, you have any comments?
No, I move we make a vote.
All righty.
I move we approve the application.
All right, I will second that motion that we approve the application as presented.
Aye, Chuck.
Those in favor? Aye, Chuck.
Aye, Patrick.
Patrick. Aye, Roxanne. All right, there you go. You're welcome. Thank you.
Excellent.
All right, next item on the agenda is the tax classification hearing. And we have our Principal Assessor, Michael Blay, is here. And Mike will give us a presentation.
Good evening, everybody. So, we are heading towards getting our tax rate set, and this is the process where we have to hold a tax classification hearing. It's a public hearing on the subject of adopting a single tax rate or shifting the burden to the commercial, industrial, personal property class. It is also a hearing to, for adoption for residential exemption or a small commercial exemption. And first, I'm going to go over the projection of the tax rate, assuming that we are going to stay in.
Sure, just kind of like, is there any, would you like me to have this up on the screen?
Oh, sure.
All right.
You want me to wait?
Why don't you keep going, and I put in a request to get the screen sharing.
Okay. So historically, the town of Stockbridge has had a single tax rate, and there's been no shift to the commercial, industrial, personal property class. The Board of Assessors this year recommend staying with the single tax rate and adopting a residential factor of one, which would, at this point, and it could change between now and the submission of all the forms that we have to submit for our tax rate, we're estimating if it were to be a single tax rate of $9.38 for fiscal year '22. Last year's tax rate was $9.78, so that would be a $0.40 decrease over the fiscal '21 tax rate. And I just would like to run down the percentages of per class that is, that makes up the tax levy. The residential percentage is 89.2203. Open space is zero because years ago, the open space category was basically consumed into the residential class. The commercial is 5.5090. The industrial percentage is .5206. I'm sorry, that is page three. Personal property is 4.7501. If you add that up, it's 100% of the tax levy. Currently, our total valuation for all the classes is $999,285,602. And what the Select Board is voting on tonight is to keep the factors in place. Adopting a residential factor of one will keep a single tax rate in Stockbridge, and that is the recommendation by the Board of Assessors. I've included in the presentation pages four and five are the actual shifts that could take place to move the burden over to the commercial and industrial and personal property class. And the board looks at this as, you know, there's such a small percentage in those three classes. It's basically slightly below 11%. And to actually move more burden of the tax levy over to those classes, they don't see that as something that is, something that the town should do because we really have historically had such a small commercial, industrial, personal property base. Let's see, so basically, the, let's see. Would you like me to go on to the residential exemption part of it? Do you want to adjust?
Well, I have, do you want questions as we go, or I only have one quick?
Whatever way you guys want to do it.
If you'd like to ask a question as we go.
About the commercial.
Yeah.
Can we shift the commercial down if we wanted to? I mean, for example, theoretically, could commercial be pegged at like the 938? Commercial, industrial. In other words, if we were to consider, if we were to consider other exemptions, could we make it so they don't impact commercial?
No. I don't believe so. Not with the adoption of a single tax rate.
No, if we weren't, if we weren't to adopt a single, if we were to look at some of the future exemptions, which would increase the rate, can we take the commercial and bring it back down?
Mm-mm. No, no, the only thing that can happen in tax classification is shifting the burden from the residential class to the commercial, industrial, and personal property, which is going to increase, it's going to create two tax rates, a lower tax rate for the residential class and a higher tax rate for the commercial class. There's no way that we can, with an 11% of our total tax levy, shift from the commercial, industrial, personal property over to the residential side. It's an impossibility. It could never happen.
So tonight, you're, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but you're deciding a single or split tax rate, and then you're deciding whether or not any of the exemptions would come into play.
Yeah, I wondered if we offset an exemption by lowering the commercial rate.
They're not tied together. You're either doing a single tax rate or a split tax rate, and then you're deciding if any exemptions are going to be in play.
Right, got it.
So I will move on to the two options. And actually, page six, I did it, I did it as a, what the state would allow initially was 20% for the residence, residential exemption of your average residential value. I actually included 20% and 35%. 35 is the maximum that the Department of Revenue will allow. Basically, the residential exemption is an option, if adopted by the Board of Assessors, that would allow a certain percentage, and again, it can be 1% to 35%, of the average residential value, not the actual residential, average, single-family home. It's the actual residential value. So on page six, in the middle of the page, the total assessed valuation, $883 million, that is actually the residential class total. That's divided by the total residential parcel count. That's not the single-family parcel count. That is the entire parcel count for the residential class. This is the calculation presented by the Department of Revenue. That gives us a average, for this example, average residential value of $521,260. That is then multiplied by the percentage that is adopted to come up with the residential exemption amount that would be deducted off of every eligible real property in town. And to be eligible for such exemption, and currently, I'm jumping a little ahead of myself, but currently, we're estimating around 600 parcels that would qualify within the tax classification. And the way we come up with the 600 parcels, it's not an easy task because there are so many different types of ownership in Stockbridge. There's a lot of LLCs and a lot of trusts. And the ruling on an eligible parcel is the owner on record who occupies the property on January 1st. And so, our office did a rough study in early prior this year, but we did a more comprehensive look at the eligible parcels about a week and a half ago, where we determined that there were roughly 600 parcels. There was about 50 to 60 parcels that actually, at this point, we would have to do a little bit of investigating to determine whether or not they actually would be eligible for this exemption. So once you determine how many eligible parcels you have, and again, if this were to be adopted, we would have to, going into the tax rate season, setting of the tax rate and sending out the bills, that's a number that we would actually, it'd have to be as concrete as possible. You can't submit your tax rate without having that number in place. So just for this presentation, you know, we'll be using 600, and we still think that's a pretty close number. So basically, there would be 600 parcels that get an exemption of roughly $104,000. And what that, and again, that would not go to second homeowners and renters who do not live at the property. If it's a dual family, which we classify as a 104, and you're living in that parcel, and you may be renting the other unit, you would qualify for the exemption. Second homeowners do not qualify for the exemption. And what happens is, once we apply the amount, which would, basically, you're not taking it off of the tax levy, you're shifting it within the residential class. So basically, there would be, if you're using a 20% with $104,000 exemption, you're talking $62,551,200 that is going to be shifted from who's eligible and who isn't eligible. Now, by doing that shift within the same class, you're also going to create a different tax rate. So if we're projecting a tax rate of $9.38 right now, that does not remain in place if a residential exemption is adopted. Because... So that wouldn't remain in place. There would be, and again, for this example, the new residential rate using the above numbers that I mentioned would be calculated at $10.10 over $9.38. This would be an increase of 72 cents over the rate that is being estimated at 938, and an overall increase in the tax rate of 32 cents from fiscal year '21 to '22. Now, the higher you go with the, with the percentage up to 35, you are creating more of an exemption, and I think the highest was around $184,000 that we calculated that could come off of every potential parcel.
Right.
Let me just make some notes about, or mention some of the notes on the residential exemption. Again, only owners that are residents of Stockbridge will get the possible benefit of the residential exemption. This will not apply to renters or second homeowners, renters that do not occupy the property. And it is still possible for an individual's property tax bill, especially this year because we have seen a significant increase in valuations due to the record number of sales and the record amount of these sale prices that occurred last year and are continuing to occur. There has been really no dip in the amounts that are, that we're seeing that are far above the new adjusted values that we're going into for fiscal year '22. It's, it's almost shocking. I mean, I've been here since 1995. I've never seen valuations within a one- to two-year period change as much as they have. And that's not saying that every single parcel is going to be seeing a huge jump. There, it really depends on the style of property that you have, not necessarily the location, because properties have sold pretty high in every area in Stockbridge and in every area in every community in Berkshire County. This is the hotspot. These are the places that people want to be, and they're, they're paying a premium, and we have to keep up with those premiums, not only for fiscal year '22, but definitely fiscal year '23, we're going to be looking at a possible additional increase in next year's valuations. Now.
Which, which styles are most at risk of a higher assessment?
Modern contemporaries, colonials, condominiums. For some strange reason, it seemed that the conventional style in ranch properties, at least for the year that we studied, weren't the hot-selling properties. I'm not saying that's like that everywhere, but we looked at it as we already had a high base rate on these properties to begin with. So just because they didn't see the same amount of increase that the modern contemporaries or the colonials did, they are right up there with how much we're charging per square foot. They're almost very all-close right now. This, the pandemic and the rush in the market has definitely brought the cost per square foot on all individual classes of property very close together, closer than they've ever been. And there will be some increases that people probably aren't expecting. But again, it's a reflection of what is happening out in the real world. We can't predict how long that's going to last. We just have to, by law, by mass general laws, analyze the market and basically make sure that our assessments are within the guidelines, which are, you know, 90 and 110% of market value, that the Department of Revenue will check every year, especially next year because we are in full revaluation in which the Department of Revenue will be visiting Stockbridge, and they'll be looking at all of the procedures that we use to follow their guidelines. And they won't find any surprises, that I can say for sure. But we find surprises when we look at the sales. I mean, immediately when a deed comes in, we run right to the system, and we look to see what the generated value is for fiscal '22. And I've been talking really close with appraisers and realtors, and they've been very kind and given me the heads up as to properties that are under contract. And we're comparing our new assessments to the contracted prices. And when I hear things like, wow, we're selling for $200,000 to $300,000 under contract for what you have, that's just an indication of what's happening. And our assessments may be a year behind because we start as of January 1st. That's our assessment date, and by the time you get your tax bill, it's closer to November. So if you're, if you're really look, and I don't know who's not looking at the market if you own a property right now. So what we're just trying to do is keep up with current trends and see where this is going. But at this point, it's, it shouldn't be shocking that there could be an increase. And from what I've seen and talked to other assessors in other communities, everyone is saying this. This is, if valuations are going down in communities in Berkshire County, South County, something's not being done properly. So that, let me just say a few more things about the residential exemption. There are currently no cities or towns in Western Mass that have adopted a residential exemption. The adoption of this exemption is basically a shift in the tax burden to second homeowners and the property owners who have rental properties and of which they do not live. It also creates an automatic split tax rate in communities that may have no intention of having a separate residential and commercial rate. I mentioned that there were about 50 to 60 properties that the assessors have not been able to properly verify. There would have to be definitely some type of process set up down the line if this was to be considered, that, you know, we're being consistent with how we are going to analyze the current number of properties that we have. And again, we don't see an indication of losing local people and gaining second homeowners. We typically see people that change to a PO box and, you know, are, whether they're selling their property in another community and getting a PO box here with hopes to go back to that other home, we're not privy to that until they actually come into our office. And the, and the only way of knowing that is to possibly keep them off of the rules for the residential exemption, and when, if there was one, and the bill to be sent out, they would have to apply for an abatement with the Board of Assessors and prove that they actually own and occupy that property year-round in order to receive it. Now, that creates, and Mike and I have discussed this, that creates another situation where the overlay account, which takes care of the exemption and abatements that are given back to the taxpayer, it is an account that's set up every year, and it's on the tax recap sheet, that is already being increased this year by nearly $60,000. And that also brings the tax rate up. The more you increase the overlay account to account for the exemptions and the abatements that you typically have in a fiscal year, on top of that, you could have 50 or 60 people coming in looking for the residential exemption. And if we don't have the money in the overlay to account for it, we create an overlay deficit for the following year. So it's, we're always trying to be very careful that we're not putting too much money in the overlay, but at the same time, every taxpayer has the right to question their value. Every taxpayer has the right to go above what the assessors have decided and go to the appellate tax board. If those cases are fought and lost by the town, the money that's refunded, it comes out of the overlay account. So we're, the Board of Assessors is, is very conscious about how much we keep in there. And a few years back, the Department of Revenue decided to consolidate all of the fiscal years, so we have one large overlay account, basically. But every assessor I know, including us, we still keep track of them on a yearly basis. And we're going to be encountering a big increase in the utility values this year. That is why we increased the overlay. We don't want to be surprised at a filing on their behalf because rumblings out there is that they're filing in every community that they see an increase in. And so we're accommodating that, but we would also have to most likely bump that up a little bit more if there was a residential exemption. And again, the way the Board of Assessors is looking at it is, in a year where valuations have gone up, and again, could be going up next year, the tax rate is the key. Having that tax rate go as low as it possibly can go within the frames of the budget and the valuations is, and to see it drop lower than it was last year, that's what you want to see when you see an increase in your valuations. If you see a tax rate that is near or above what you had the previous year, and you know that property values have increased the way they have, it's a perfect storm for draining that overlay account and many, many court cases that could come against, not, you know, be, when a taxpayer sees their valuation, they're basically looking at their tax amount, and they're using the tax amount as a way of saying, most likely, my value is too high. When that value may be fine because it's based on market value and what's happening, but it's a gut-wrench feeling, it's a, it's a, it's a personal thing. I am complaining about the taxes. Will the taxes come from the tax rate? And that's where we look at it, is we are trying to make sure that, yes, we did increase the values, but we're trying to keep the tax rate, and it is a very low tax rate for Berkshire County and South County. And that's something that the Finance Committee and the Select Board and everyone involved in the process has tried to keep it as low as we possibly could.
Do you want to have more questions?
Sure.
So, at, looking at the 35% exemption page, can you just confirm a few things? One, this is in some actual values that some residents have. There's one on the books. I saw it was $211,000. So the, under the current, at the current tax rate, the taxes are around $2,000. Under the 35% residential exemption, taxes would drop to $250,000 to $300,000. Because at the low end, there's such a high, the $184,000, you know. At $300,000, the actual amount of tax would drop from just under $3,000 to about $1,400. At $400,000, be, just under $4,000, would drop to about $2,600. And at $500,000 valuation, the amount of tax someone would pay would drop from just under $5,000 to about $3,600, $3,700. So, you know, I think that, I don't want to get into the debate yet, but I mean, to just make it clear what we're talking about here, we're talking about a graduated approach to property tax, like, you know, Baldwin and Propstown and a whole bunch of other Cape communities have done, where basically, the lower the value of your property, you know, you're graduating the payments to really provide a relief to what would be considered the most modest homes in town.
Well, to address the low-end valuations, the low end, there's other, there's another component to this is this exemption, and I noted it in the top part of page eight, the application cannot reduce the taxable value of the property to less than 10% of its full and fair cash value. So if you have a home that's assessed for $200,000 and you implement a 35% residential exemption, they no longer qualify for the exemption. They're going to be below the threshold.
Well, they would get it at $20,000, huh?
Well, you can, I'm just saying, I mean, that you'd be taking $182,000 off of a $200,000 assessment, they would no longer qualify for the exemption because they now have an assessment that's, you know, roughly $20,000, and that would be eliminated. That would be, well, right, but our threshold begins, I think, at, is it $182,000, I believe?
So my sample was 211, so, you know.
Yeah.
Well, the remaining would be 28, so.
And what was, yeah, what was your other question?
No, I just wanted to make it, I want, the math is complicated because it's graduated.
It is.
You know, I just want to give some, some examples, some practical examples of what this would do to the tax rate.
And that's also assuming that nothing happened to their valuation.
Right, well, that's my fear, is that you're saying that the style of the house, Right. Well, that's my fear, is that you're saying that the style of the house, there's factors that may increase some people's valuations over others, creating a highly unpredictable environment.
Right, but that happens, the rule of thumb in assessing has always been a third, a third, a third. A third go down, a third stay the same, and a third go up. It seems to always work its way out, you know, work its way around that. The thing is, if we're talking about tax rates going down and residential exemptions being applied, you have to look at what was the valuation last year. That valuation is now higher. That value, it's not just taking 35% off of that. It's, you're now going to be adjusting the tax rate higher to make up for the lost levy against a valuation that's higher.
I understand how it works.
Right, okay.
So any potential relief is ameliorated by these other factors, the fact that the valuation goes up and also the tax rate.
It does, but at less than, you know, the median assessed value is $521,000. For the 50% of homes below that, they get a significant tax rate. You know, the offset amount of the rate going up from even, you know, from the current rate to 1070, even if it goes that high, is about a 10% increase. Even from the lower 938 rate, it's about a 15% increase. But you're talking about cutting, someone at $300,000 sees a 60, 70% decrease. So the offset of the two doesn't cancel each other out, not nearly.
But you're also talking about, you're also talking about dividing the ownership down the middle to, here's who gets the exemption, here's who doesn't get the exemption, and also pays a higher tax rate. And I'm talking about the second homeowners as well. So, you know, there's a, it's not a win-win situation when you're eliminating, you know, a potential of 700 properties that contribute more to the tax levy than anybody else, and also now is being told, you're not eligible for it just because you're a second homeowner.
Okay, right.
That's one of the reasons why this hasn't been implemented.
No, it hasn't been implemented in the Berkshires because there's only two towns in the Berkshires with a profile of so many second homeowners, Alford and Monterey. On the school committee merger project that I'm assigned to, we have a list of all of the towns that have second homeowners and valuations like ours, and there's only a couple like us. And this is kind of what it comes down to for me, is we've got two types of homeowners who I think are distressed. We have first time home buyers, and we have seniors on fixed incomes. And you look at inflation right now, where food is going up, it's meat, it's eggs, it's milk, and it's home prices. Those are the things that is all over the news. And I remain concerned that, especially in a situation where we really can't predict the winners and losers about where these assessments come out, that we can provide relief to the folks who have the most, who are on fixed incomes or relatively lower salaries in these lower properties, we can provide relief right now, and we can do it in a way that...
Patrick, could I ask you, do you have a motion to make? I mean, this discussion has, we've had this discussion before.
Yeah, okay, I'll make a motion to accept the 35% residential exemption.
Can the panel talk?
You have to close the hearing.
We still have to talk about this motion.
I was gonna say, we gotta complete the hearing. We'll have people, then you close the hearing, then you make motions and vote, so.
Michael, if people want to talk and ask questions about this, can we do that?
Let's finish the presentation by assessors.
Yeah, John, yeah, let Michael Blay finish his presentation, then I was going to ask for public comment and questions.
Well, in terms of the public, it's obvious that Michael has done an incredible amount of work here, so let's listen.
So, thank you. The next part is, the third part of the classification is the small commercial exemption. And what this does if adopted is it allows up to a 10% of the assessed value of each eligible Class III commercial property to get an exemption, up to 10%. And, but again, what we have to do is we have to basically vet the number of properties that would qualify for this. And the way we do it, it's a little unusual, but it's pretty much the system that all assessors use, is we get a listing from the D O R every year of the businesses that have less than 10 employees. And what this class basically is for, is for businesses, and I'll actually get to the business part of it, with more than 10 people and assessed valuation of less than a million, no more than 10 people, I'm sorry, and assessed value no more than a million. We figure there are, from this listing, 10 parcels that would qualify, and you take, what you do with the calculation, it's similar to the residential exemptions, you multiply the 10% by the commercial valuation, the commercial levy, which is $7,792,800. That would give you a total value of $779,280 to be exempted from every eligible commercial property. The thing about this is, the exemption does not go to the business, and it's the businesses that are hurting. It goes to the owner of the property, who has to do nothing in order to get this. And with such a low percentage, again, below 11% of our commercial, industrial, and personal property in town, we just don't see this as being something that's viable.
Many businesses, like I work for the Waldorf School, we actually pay a third of the tax bill that comes in, so.
Right, that's the thing is, I mean, you don't know where that money...
But I mean, what happens to the commercial, all I'm saying is that our expenses were lower too, because we actually pay, we get a copy of the bill and we pay a third of it, because we occupy a third of the bill.
Okay. Yeah, and so what this would do is, again, create, I don't want to say artificial, but it would create another shift. Again, if you're voting on the residential factor of wanting to keep the tax rate the same, what this does, again, because now you are shifting the amount around in the levy, is it would change the tax rate from 938 to 950. It would be an increase of 12 cents over the 938. And, let's see, it'd have a very small impact on the parcels that are eligible, even using the highest exemption allowed by law, which is the 10%. Again, the reduction does not go back to the small business, it only benefits the owner of the commercial property. And we're not saying that those owners may not be having a difficult time, but this was initially set up to help the businesses themselves. Again, the adoption of this exemption is a shift in the burden to the larger commercial and industrial properties in town, and it will create an automatic split tax rate in the communities that may have no intention of having a separate residential and commercial rate. And another thing with the commercial properties, a big part of our commercial, industrial, and personal property valuation are the utility values. And they would not be seeing any of this benefit either. But they will, again, we're going up quite a bit on those valuations for fiscal year 22. And then to also get an increase in the tax rate from this would really be, that talk about doing it with the actual overlay, that would wipe our overlay out. So, the Board of Assessors, again, we presented this over the years, basically with the same information. One year it's nine parcels that are eligible, another year it might be 11. It doesn't change that much in Stockbridge because we're not adding to our commercial class. And that's basically it on the small commercial exemption.
Chuck, if you're out there, do you have any specific questions for Michael Blay?
No, I think you did a great job. I think the tax rate going down is excellent, especially all the projects that we're doing and getting done. And I think are financially very stable and no issues whatsoever. So, yeah, I think it's, the recommendation would be what we should follow.
Okay. So now is the time we'd like to hear from the public. If anyone has questions or comments, please raise your hand.
Larry Ackerman.
Larry Ackerman?
Hi, can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your, Michael, an amazing presentation. I hope there's not going to be a quiz, because I'm guaranteed. I'm here because I am a second homeowner, and yet my family has owned a home here in Stockbridge for 70 years. So I have very strong roots here and am a big fan of this town. My message is that, as a second homeowner, I actually don't mind paying a little bit more to help people at the bottom of the pyramid, so to speak. I'm okay with that, within reason, within reason. And I don't know what that means at the moment, given the presentation that Mike just made. I have a concern, however, that, from what I've just heard, that, you know, let's just pass the cost along to the second homeowners and those who have rental properties. But there are plenty of people in Stockbridge, I would think, or a number, who are pretty well off, just intrinsic, you know, residents. And I heard no comment or conversation about why the burden shouldn't also be shifted to them. So, you know, to me, it's like a sliding scale. And if second homeowners are part of that increase, I'm okay with that, but not exclusively. If it's exclusively put on the backs of second homeowners and rental property owners, then I am against it. But I am for it, I am for it, if in fact, you know, as I said, I'm happy to pay a little bit more, but not as, not in the sense that, you know, it's all up to, not me personally, obviously, but folks in my position. So, I don't know, any comment on that?
Can you trust the breakeven? You know, there's a certain rate where even residents should...
At what percentage?
You know, well, I mean, it's not like a, yeah, it doesn't matter, you either example.
At 20%, I can't figure somewhere. 20% would be $1,421,000.
What that means is that even if you're a resident and your house is worth more than 1.4 million, you'd pay more.
I just want to know them among other company. My last comment, and then I will be complete, is I, you know, I think lower taxes is fine, but I also am a very, very strong supporter of investing in the community. And I don't mind, as I said, bearing some of that cost to ensure that we have a strong and stable community, residential community and town community. And that's where I'm coming from personally, and I hope that means something to somebody. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Mr. Hart?
John Hart?
Hi there. You know, Michael, I have a couple of questions here. And one is, and I've been banging on this can for a long time. You know, Stockbridge has gotten press all over the world about being a delightful community. And obviously, because real estate prices have gone through the roof, it is a delightful community. We have people here that are older than I am. I am very capable of paying the real estate taxes on my house. But I can't help but wonder that if we combine Patrick's residential tax exemption with a commercial tax rate, what would happen to our just basic residential tax rate for people who live here?
It would go up.
It would go up?
It will always go up. If a residential, any percent of the residential exemption that is adopted, the tax rate that's being projected will go up. It has to. It has to make up for the loss that every parcel is getting off of their taxes.
I understand that. What I'm saying is if we split our tax rate and introduced a commercial rate in the town of Stockbridge, because I think that the reason that we haven't introduced a commercial rate in the past, which is we did not want to discourage people from opening businesses here. And I think that's a bunch of balderdash, frankly, because I think people seeing the potential in Stockbridge will open businesses here. But if we had a commercial rate, I can't say what we would set it at, because you're the expert, I'm not the expert. And we had the residential rate, what would happen to the tax rate of those houses that are under $500,000, which mine obviously is not?
The rate of the amount.
I'm sorry?
The rate would go up, the amount paid would go down.
The amount paid by the residents.
Yeah.
He's asking Michael Blay.
Yeah, well, I mean, technically, the Select Board can shift the tax burden up to 150% onto the commercial class. Granted, there is a commercial class. I mean, we have an 11% out of 100% that is the commercial, industrial, personal property that has not really changed in many, many, many years. So, you know, if you knew that there were commercial properties that were coming here that could make up for that adjustment, that's one thing. But just basically an artificial shift to a class that really has never gotten out of the 10%, it's almost unheard of in Massachusetts. You typically never see that happen. There'd just be no reason for it. There is no pressure from the small amount of commercial that we have here, you know, first of all, that their valuations are too high, or that there's no pressure, typically no pressure from the residential side saying, wow, our tax rate is so high, you need to shift it over to the commercial side. The tax rate is historically low. It's one of the lowest out this way. I mean, so I don't know how much lower it can go and still maintain the functions of the town.
I understand that. You know, I'm slowly but surely entering into the world of the ancient people of Stockbridge. And, you know, I don't expect my resources to run out anytime soon, but I do see people in town who have been here for, you know, their families have been here for years and years and years. And what I'm trying to come up with is a way to provide them with some relief with regard to taxes. And I'm not talking about writing an extra little amount of money on top of my tax bill to give them some relief. I'm talking about an official way to give them relief. And actually, you know, the Red Lion Inn would tax at a, you know, a commercial rate. If the Stockbridge General Store were, you know, I'm part of this business community, so I know regardless of the pandemic at this point, how much money people are bringing through the door of their businesses. And they're paying the same amount of taxes, or they're being assessed the same amount of taxes as I am on my house in Rattlesnake Mountain. Or the lady who is 95 years old living on Church Street, who all of a sudden gets her tax bill and says, oh my God, how am I going to pay this? I'm just...
The commercial properties are not being assessed the same as the residential properties. They may have the same tax rate, but as far as the base rates that we apply per square foot, they're completely different, and they're a lot higher. And again, the thing is, when we're applying assessment information or the general laws, we have to have sales to back up what we're doing in any class of property. We can't arbitrarily adjust valuations on the commercial side. They may have been stagnant for years, and they're going to remain stagnant for years unless we see market activity. That will give us a reason to make adjustments upward and have them pay more taxes. But until that happens, there's no way that we, we have no tools in place that we can justify that to the Department of Revenue because everything we do in the assessor's office is reviewed by the D O R. And if, you know, I'd love to see commercial sales. It'd make my job a lot easier. It just doesn't happen. Maybe one or two, if that, every couple of years. That's not enough to go in and have the assessors adjust base rates, that there's just no reason to do it until we have proof. And if even a sale that comes through, we will vet that sale and we will make sure that that's an arms-length sale that isn't going to throw off every commercial, this is what we do on the residential side as well, that it won't throw off every commercial property that's out there. Maybe it's an outlier, it doesn't need to be in the study. But we just don't have commercial sales that take place in Stockbridge, not on the level that other communities have. And that would give us reason to, you know, they're not the sales that are, they're not the properties that are selling during COVID. They're not the ones that are going to see the big, huge adjustments. And the Board of Assessors looks at it, is you can't, and myself as well, where is the reasoning for putting... where, where is the reasoning for putting more burden onto the commercial class right now when the properties aren't selling? And frankly, during the pandemic, a lot of them have closed. I mean, we're, I would say we're lucky, we, we still can maintain what we have in Stockbridge. But any reason to put more burden on a class that only is 11% of the total tax levy, we just don't, we, we, we wouldn't understand that. We wouldn't, we wouldn't see a point in that.
Well, thank you for that explanation. I, I'm, I'm curious to understand a little bit more about, um, the residential exemption. You know, is it net-net positive, or is it net-net negative? As far as the little old lady who lives in a $250,000 house?
Well, it all depends. I mean, if, there's a, there's a trade-off with any of these programs. If you're allowing an exemption of up to 35% off of the average residential value, that amount has to be made up within the tax levy by adjusting the tax rate. So, there, there is going to be, there, again, depending on how you look at, you know, the locals versus the second homeowners, you're creating a divide, because there are, automatically, there are going to be those that get and those that don't. And at that, but, but what you're also creating is a tax rate that everyone, even those that got the exemption, are going to be paying on. And when, when we're making every effort to keep that tax rate low during a time when valuations are increasing, this is not going to help to keep that low.
Come on, Michael, he asked a specific question. At $250,000, you know, the, 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 that person's taxes would go from about $2,300 to about $700.
I mean, I'm not saying the taxes wouldn't go down. I'm just giving you the overall picture of what would happen with an adoption of this.
Michael, I'm concerned about our elderly residents and our residents who don't have the resources that many of us in town have. Another thing in terms of Larry Ackerman's comment that I would like to present. Admittedly, and I think the time is over, where somebody is going to chastise me from this. But I was a, a draft dodger in the late 60s and the early 70s. And I managed very well to transfer my, my residential address from Massachusetts to Vermont to California quite successfully in order to get out of the draft. And I would suggest that, you know, you have a failsafe that you think in your mind is going to prevent people who don't live here year-round from, um, coming in and saying, I'm, I'm a year-round resident. You know, I want you to look a little bit more closely into that one, because that's, 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 that's got a backdoor to it.
Okay.
Agreed. Do we have anybody else?
Bruce Blair.
Thank you, John. We're going to move on. We have Bruce Blair who'd like to speak.
Thank you. I really, both Larry and John said some things that, that I was thinking also. So, um, I'm just, I'll just piggyback a little bit on that. Larry's right, I think, um, that certainly, whatever the solution to this is, and, and there needs to be at least a feeling that people are voluntarily or that equitably being, um, being assessed. And, and if, if we're going to, uh, split the taxes, which I don't think is a bad idea either. And John is right, and Chuck, I, I think you, as much as anybody in the room there knows, that we have a lot of longtime residents here who don't have the resources that, that some other people, some of our newer, um, um, property owners here have. And, um, and, and honestly, I'm, I'm looking at all you guys, and I'm thinking, I want you to do something. So, the, the, if this isn't the vehicle, or there isn't a way to make this a vehicle, I still want you to do something, because I think that's the big picture. This is, you're just talking about how you might do this. But really, I think what we want to do is make sure that we have longtime residents here. I know some of them very well, they would not come and speak at a meeting like this, but they don't have the money to, to, to pay, pay, uh, these tax increases that, that could be coming. And, um, and they need, and they, and the taxes they're paying now are hard on them as, as well. And, and we know people, we know these people. And Chuck, I know you know these people, and Roxanne, I'm sure you do too, and everybody does. But we got, Chuck, John is right, we got to take care of these folks. They're part of our community, they were here first. And, and, and I don't want to, I don't want to sound like we're divisive or anything, but we got, we can't ignore this, because our, our, our whole town is changing, and we need to deal with, with all the people who live here. And, and, and so that's really, that's really all I have to say. And it's not very helpful or a question really about, um, the exemption. But, um, whatever the answer is, that's the problem to me. Thank you.
Right, well, I'd like to point out that this is one topic, this particular splitting and going to, from the rate of one, from one, um, to doing this tax exemption. However, we do have several other programs in place that do benefit, um, those who might have difficulty. And those are things that we can address, and they are addressed through annual town meeting. And they are items where we can increase the limitations. Um, and the select board can put that forward in the warrant and have, um, the voters vote as to whether or not they want to increase those, the limits that are currently on there. And right now, they're low, and maybe Michael can speak to that specifically.
Yes, the, the, um, there are statutory exemptions from the Department of Revenue. We follow through on the guidelines that they provide us. And there are limitations for income, equity and age. But there are exemptions that we've had in place for years. Technically, it's called a 17E or a 41C. And, you know, it starts at 500, but we've looked, and that's for, um, people that are 70 years of age and own and occupy their property for at least the last five years. And that, you know, we've, we've done research, and we can actually increase that amount at a town meeting vote. It's, it has nothing to do with the Board of Assessors, it's the select board that can do this. And, um, that's something that we probably should look into. And we've talked about this. And there is a, um, tax deferral program that if people are interested, they can contact the assessor's office. And, um, that's a little bit more extreme, but it is an option if you're having difficulties paying your taxes. We have a senior work-off program for seniors that the select board could give you more information on. And, um, there's, there's just, you know, it's not just for the seniors, it's for the veterans and the disabled, uh, specifically those that are blind or veterans that have a 10% disability. And these are, uh, applications that you can find on our website, or you can email us, and we will put you on the list and send that to you every year. You may not be eligible for it this year, but you might be eligible for it the following year. So there are, um, items that are in place, that, there is also the, a fund that's created. And, and I will thank, take the opportunity now to thank everyone that's contributed to the aid for the elderly. And that is a fund that, when taxes, especially specifically the second half tax bill, we have a committee that looks at who has bills that are due or having problems paying those bills. And the committee will look at the applications, it's a simple application, and will reward, um, dollars, tax, uh, refunds to, um, eligible parties. And it's been very beneficial over the years. So there are programs in place, and don't be afraid to ask.
Right, I mean, and I'd like to add too, that the tax deferral program, there's a statutory, um, income requirement, which again, can be addressed.
It's 20,000 at the moment.
Right, and that can be addressed as to whether or not we wanted to shift that up. And, um, the interest rate is 8%, but again, can also be adjusted at annual town meeting by a vote of, of the voters. So, these are additional ways that we can address the situation of the people like me, I suppose, you know, the older residents that maybe have to live on social security. So, uh, I think that we have numerous different ways that we can address, um, those kinds of concerns that you're expressing. And, um, I'd like to say also, uh, I haven't had anybody beating down my door in favor of the tax exemption. So, the fact that we're not hearing anything from anyone in terms of anyone 70 and, or, or over, longtime residents that have, um, lower-valued properties, I'm not hearing from those people. So if those people are here tonight, we would love to hear from you. But as of this juncture, I haven't really heard from anyone.
No, I'm sorry, I'm here tonight, and I would, you know, go for the residential exemption in a heartbeat. Because I, I know people who are in Provincetown, who are aged, and were going to move to a, you know, nursing facility in Hyannis, who, when this came through, um, you know, they ended up staying in Provincetown because they could afford to stay in Provincetown. And I think that will be the same case here in Stockbridge, including you and Patrick and me. And, Michael, you live in North Adams, you do whatever you want.
All right, thanks. Doily noted, John, that you are here.
Both Michaels do, both Michaels do.
I don't know if that's a good or bad thing.
Can I follow up, please?
Oh, Bruce, tell me how to raise my hand.
You have to press, press in the upper right-hand corner, you'll find a, an icon there, Carol.
All right, Bruce, you want to finish?
Yes, and, and I'll be brief. John, John, you know, you're right, and I wasn't really talking about, um, some of these, um, measures that are already in place that are for, um, you know, that are really, I think they were almost for, uh, for people who were approaching poverty level issues. We're talking about sort of the average folks that have lived for a long time, that, that, you know, have, have middle kinds of incomes or lower-middle kinds of incomes, the regular folks who, um, who, who are, if they're going to have trouble with their taxes, it's going to put an unfair burden on them. And, um, and, and, and this requires a more systemic approach than what frankly, what are, you know, they're kind of a bunch of gimmicks, they're not bad things, but they're kind of a bunch of gimmicks. I, you know, and that's why the, the, the estimated tax, um, you know, the, uh, the, the splitting the tax, um, needs more, needs more consideration, as far as I'm concerned. I'm hearing the numbers, I'm hearing some of the, some of Michael's, um, explanation and, and starting to get it. But, um, I still don't, I, I, I don't think it's something to just, um, to throw out. I think it's something that should be, should be considered, um, maybe some additional time spent talking, thinking about it. I know I haven't spent that much time on it, but this is not what I'm talking about. I'm talking, when I say that these people need help, we need, you know, the person who's like in the middle somewhere, or lower middle, which would be me, you know, it's hard, it's going to be hard for me to pay my taxes going down the road. I'm not wealthy. And my family's been over here over 50 years, and that's nothing compared to some of the people I'm talking about. But that, so that's all I'd say, thank you.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, I don't know how to raise my hand, Roxanne, but I'm waiting to speak when it's my turn.
No one else has their hand up?
All right, go ahead, Carol.
You mentioned some other, um, things that are available, but it's a very important word you used. You said deferment. And everyone has to know that there's a very significant difference between reducing the tax rate that is owed, which is what Patrick's talking about, and deferment, in which case, that money is still owed. And it's paid to the town with, by the way, an interest rate. If you sell, or when you die, it becomes a burden to those who inherit your property. That's a very different matter.
Well, I understand that, Carol. That is one of several options that we have. And I do understand that that's a deferral, and it is ultimately paid by someone at some point in time. But we're just pointing out that there are these several other programs that are currently in place. That's just one of them. The exemption is in, is an exemption. The aid to the elderly is aid to the elderly. So, um, it's just one of several, and I'm not saying that the, one is better than the other. My personal thought on the deferral is, uh, like you, my property, my assets are my legacy to my children, and I wouldn't want to have deferred taxes necessarily. However, it is something the town can look at to make it more attractive to some people. If we were, um, going to change, um, the requirement for income, or we were going to require or change the percentage of interest. So there are things that we can do to tweak that to make it more attractive to some people.
Can, can I ask a question of Michael? Michael, you know, you've heard me talk about this before, because I got into it. The, the, the thing that's in California, I don't know, there's chapter 31 or chapter 13, or whatever it was, that was voted on back in, I don't know, the late 80s, the early 90s. And the idea was, the person that is purchasing a piece of property, purchased it for, say, $500,000. And with the exception of a possible, you know, inflation increase of 2.5%, their tax rate remains based upon that $500,000 for the duration of the time that they own that house. When they sell that house for $1.2 million, the person who buys the house for $1.2 million ends up paying the tax on the $1.2 million. Is there any way that, within the Commonwealth, that we can institute such a thing in an individual town like Stockbridge?
No. No, there's really no getting around it. I don't create the mass general laws. It's something that the, whatever the Department of Revenue, uh, when, when classification was put into place in, I believe it was 1981, it was basically to create real estate safeguards so individual communities couldn't just up the taxes whenever they had a shortage in their budget. There is protection in place, the, we already have Proposition 2.5, which doesn't allow, uh, the not individual properties' taxes to go up more than 2.5%, but for each community's tax levy to not be increased more than 2.5% without an override. And those are very rare in Massachusetts. So, i- it's highly unlikely that that will ever happen, not in Massachusetts.
Do we have anyone else out there who'd like to speak?
There are no other hands?
All right, no other hands up? Jay, would you, do you have something to say?
Quick comment, if I might. Jay Bicopsi, everybody, and not to, uh, not to repeat everything that's, uh, Michael has said and everything that's gone on. I just would like to remind everybody that in the state of Massachusetts, of 351 communities, only 14 have passed a residential exemption. And there are none in Berkshire County, as Michael has said. The 14 communities include Arlington, Belmont, Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, Medford, Somerville, and Wallfair. That, that would be point number one. Point number two, I think there is a genuine concern for, uh, a split tax rate from the Board of Assessors, and they are concerned about supporting a residential exemption. I don't, I'm not sure, uh, that would be the right, the right, uh, vehicle. And I think Chair, uh, Roxanne has indicated that there are a number of other vehicles that could be explored. And I think it would be incumbent upon us to do that and really, uh, not cause ourselves a, an overlay problem and a, and a tax rate shortfall. So, I, I think that's basically where, where I'm coming from. No one in Berkshire County has entertained this. And obviously, there's a reason for it. I mean, there are, there are a number of, uh, very successful governments in Berkshire County. Okay?
Thank you, Jay. All right, no further hands?
May I shut close the air?
Yep. I move that we, uh, close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? I, Roxanne.
After this, right?
Pardon me? Did you vote? I didn't hear you.
I said I, Patrick, yes. To close the air, yeah.
All righty. So, um, time for us to deliberate as a board. So, Chuck, your thoughts?
Well, I think there's, need a lot more information. I don't know, second homeowners, I'll give you happy.
are going to be happy, but there's a lot of second homeowners who've got these houses, you know, through, you know, just decades of family inheritance, and they're not well off, you know, to fight this burden either. Some of them, most of them probably can. But I don't like the divide of second homeowners and the non-residents and the rentals. Everything, the tax rate's low, there's other ways we can help these people who need help. I think we should look into that very seriously. Changing those numbers, making the income higher, making the, you know, the interest lower, which you certainly do. So that's my opinion. I think it's not the time. It may be down the road. I don't think this is the time to do it.
Yeah, I can say that one of my concerns is, Michael Blay mentioned, there's something like 50 properties that are really in question as to whether or not they qualify for the exemption, and that this is a complex and almost a moving target. I mean, especially with, you know, the amount of transactions that we're seeing in Berkshire County. The determination of who is going to have the benefit of this exemption and who isn't is not cut and dried. This, this is a really tough job. And then on top of that, what is the cost and the timeframe for being able to actually put something like this in place? Should we vote for it? So I agree with Chuck in that I don't think this is the time. I think it certainly can continue to be explored, but the one thing that we can explore quickly at next annual town meeting is to place several articles on the warrant that addresses some of these other programs and try to enhance them and make them more attractive. And also to get the word out to the public and, in making our website easier to access some of this information. Michael and I had a conversation this morning about, you know, maybe doing a video for the assessor to actually do a video explaining these things in detail. And obviously, we, we've witnessed it tonight. Michael is very good at articulating and explaining how these things work. So I think that we have a number of avenues that we can go down right now that make a lot of sense. Patrick?
First of all, I want to thank the two of you for indulging my concerns around the tax rate on this. I do appreciate it. I obviously see how, you know, where this is going, so I'm just gonna keep my remarks brief. One, we have a precedent for this. We have an overlay district around the bowl. You know, we have a personal property tax for second homeowners that residents don't pay. It's not like we haven't done things that have created, you know, inequities. If, if the definition of equity is only on the, on the tax rate, then we shouldn't be doing the personal property over, tax overlay or whatever, and we shouldn't be doing the, the overlay around the bowl. So that's just one point, is we have done this before. Second, only Alford has a higher percentage of second homeowners than Stockbridge does in Berkshire County. Lee has 8%. We've got somewhere between 50 and 60%, whoever you ask. So it's just a little bit different here. The, the, the number of teardowns and multimillion dollar, you know, rebuilds that we see create a distortion in the market for adjoining properties. And that is not universally the same. It's not like everybody's assessment goes up and therefore the tax rate goes down. Some peoples are going to go up more than others, and which is going to create further stress on some of the folks. If I own a colonial, I'm going to end up paying more in taxes than if I own a ranch. Who's to know whether, whether that is, you know? Then I would, I would just add that, you know, my concern here is, you know, my oncologist told me the other day that one in three of the people they see at the cancer center choose between food and medicine. For me, this is not about whether it's fair to folks of means. And I get that it may not be. What it's about for me is to make sure that the folks who've lived here their whole lives, or the folks who want to consider a place to live, you know, have every advantage they can have to make sure that they continue doing it. And, and I just am focused on those folks, not on whether or not it's inherently unfair, which I, which I, I concede it may well be, you know?
Well, I'm not saying it's inherently unfair. I'm just saying that there certainly has to be, we need to get more detail in terms of what is it going to take to actually, can we accurately determine and make the determination who will benefit and who won't? And then there's a whole other conversation that has to happen around that percentage if we were to adopt. So...
It's also that the question who is and who won't is, when who won't, how much of a burden it's going to be placed on some of them to make up this difference?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, that's an elite group. Some are going to have no trouble, others are going to have issues with it, who are kind of barely making it on their little, you know, codges with the overlay district and all the stuff that, you know, they're keeping the same, they're not in the same boat with those million, multimillion dollar houses. So it's going to open up a can of worms on both ends. I think we need more, more time. I think we got to take the year and go through this in more detail, what other options we have, and come up with, you know, next time you bring this up, we have mostly all the answers we can have on both ends.
Just saying, we did that a year ago. We said we would do the exact same thing. You know, just saying.
We've gotten closer with the, the vetting process because the second time around, we did actually go parcel by parcel through the voters list and the street listing, and, you know, basically came up with one list of yes, and the shorter, much shorter list from the, there's about 50 to 63 parcels. And what we thought we could also do at the beginning of the year is send letters to those questionable parcels. And, you know, it may be confusing to them what we're trying to do, but explain and say, look, we're, we're in a vetting process for a potential investigation into the residential exemption, and it would be in your benefit, or maybe not in your benefit, but let's try and get a clarification of what some of these LLCs are. It, it's not slowing down. Almost every other deed that comes through is a trust or an LLC, and you cannot look up an LLC in the street listing. And there's, there's got to be a better way of doing it. And if sending out letters or correspondence to the taxpayers, maybe as a questionnaire, some people might think it's too personal, but if they're interested in getting an exemption, they will comply and hopefully comply with the letter and give us a much better definition of this is what an eligible parcel should be and can be.
Right. And there is the concern that John Hart expressed in terms of how easy it is to just say, well, this is my full-time resident. I'm here at least, you know, X number of days per year. And so that's another issue that I think that we have to get some thought to.
Right. And, and let me just close. Michael and the entire Board of Assessors have been so helpful and supportive in trying to help us figure out these sorts of things. And everybody I've talked to in town about this, whether or not they agree with it, we all agree with the same values and the same concerns. And this is not at all, there's a bunch of different options here. I get it. And I would just appreciate the fact that you guys gave this, the amount of time that you gave it tonight so that we can discuss and debate what some of these options are. I really do appreciate that.
Right, because we're not really on a different page.
We're all on the same side. Just different, different tactics to address it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, Patrick. I'm 100% behind anything we can do to help the people who need help.
Right.
But we got to do it in a, well, we're not going to overburden the people, put them in a situation where they can't pay their taxes.
You want me to make my motion, or do you want to just skip it? Put everybody in a box.
It's up to you.
Well, I know it's not going to...
Proceedurally, Mike, we need a vote on the single or split tax rate.
Yeah, and then...
And we need votes on the two exemptions, the residential and the commercial.
Lead us through it.
Yep. So the first vote would be to adopt a residential factor of one, which would keep a single tax rate in place.
Commercial versus residential.
Yes, residential versus commercial industrial personal property.
Residential factor of one, I make that motion.
I'll second. All those in favor?
I, Chuck.
I, Patrick.
I, Roxanne.
And the second would be for the adoption of a residential factor in Town Stockbridge for FY '22.
I mean...
A yes or a no?
I didn't hear you.
Resemption?
Yeah, the residential exemption.
You said factor.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the residential exemption. Yep.
So is there a motion on that?
Well, what is the actual question? Because I can...
Residential, do we have a motion to adopt the residential?
Just say yes, Roxanne. That's all that's, that's all that's required here.
So, do we have a motion here, or we're voting?
No, we, someone has to make a motion, yeah.
Is there a motion?
You want me, I'll make my motion if you want me to, or I'll, I'll just decline to endorse one of yours.
Go ahead, make a motion.
I mean, because you have to make a motion for yours anyway.
Half of what's being said, I'm sorry.
I make a motion, we adopt a residential exemption. This is before the map, right? So that motion's on the floor?
You're here.
Do you have a second? Do I hear a second? Hearing none, motion fails.
Ah, okay.
Commercial.
And the third and final is, is there an adoption of the small commercial exemption for fiscal year '22?
I make a motion, we do not adopt it.
Second.
All those in favor?
I, Chuck.
I, Roxanne.
I, Patrick. My motion failed on, on the residential exemption, but did you make one to pass? I think we actually have to, or...
No, you had a motion.
Oh, okay.
Motion to approve.
All right.
Wasn't second.
We're done then. On to the next thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Okay, so have you contacted your panel?
Thanks, Michael.
Thanks, Mike. All right.
Do you need me anymore for the rest of this?
Is that you, Chuck?
Yeah.
Well, you don't have to be here. I don't think we're voting on anything else.
I want to...
Oh, back to Earl and his employment.
All right, well, next up we have Chief Eneli, and we have a conditional offer to discuss a conditional offer of employment to Michael Norse. Am I pronouncing that right, chief?
Norse.
Norse.
Norse, right.
I'll make a motion that we accept Earl's recommendation to offer employment.
I'll second.
Before, I just have a question.
But is he here this evening?
Yes, yes.
Yes, he is here.
Michael, are you related to Winnie?
Uh, yes.
Uh, we went to high school with her, Chuck and I. Great school, too.
That's my aunt, yes.
Oh, okay, great. I make a motion.
Hi.
All right, Chuck made a motion that we approve this conditional offer of employment to Michael Norse.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I, Chuck.
I, Roxanne.
I, Patrick. I, chief.
All right, thank you.
There you go, Daryl. Thank you for having us.
All right.
Thank you. Well, that's okay, never mind. Thank you.
What? I didn't...
Well, we have the chief on. I was hoping he would maybe comment on all these solicitations for the, the fake police, to tell people where they can donate. That's legit. Because I get 10 of them a day. And I was just saying, he's here on the call and maybe...
Well, it's, it's not on our agenda. So maybe in another meeting, we'll bring him.
We have the Stockbridge fund, though.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have things to get through tonight.
All right.
Okay, next on the agenda is discussion of the Park Street Pump Station project and potential tree removal. Tony Campetti, are you here?
Yes, I am.
There you are.
Under my wife's name, her computer.
It says Becky. Wait a minute.
Hi, Beck.
I know, same church, wrong queue.
All righty, so would you like to lead us off? And Mike, do you have something you can pull up on a screen share? So...
Yep, I'm just sitting, sorry. I was just the one of our other people that were done with that part.
All right, go ahead, Tony, I'm sorry.
Tony, which one would you like?
So basically, the overview of the, what we, what I want to talk about tonight is our, as you guys are well aware of, is our aging pump station on Park Street. It's well over 50 years old. In the last five or seven years, we've had some really, you know, significant failures down there with it. The technology that, that it runs, runs from is, is very old, kind of outdated. And so we want to replace it, be proactive. And as you know, the town voters approved the sewer department to borrow a significant amount of money to do it. And we're at that point where we are engineering it to get it out to bid. And as some of you know, that the optimal site to site the new station adjacent to the existing is right snap, snap dab in the middle of a tree, which we would like to, which I would like to, Michael will show you on the screen, that the sewer commission has voted to move forward with the proposed plan by Dave Prickett Engineering as drawn, draft drawn. And to do that, we need to remove that tree down there on Park Street. So I guess that's the discussion here.
That's it, move the tree.
Excuse me?
That's it, just remove that tree.
To remove the tree to move forward with the engineering, to get the project out to bid for like early December and then back and constructed in the year of 2022 construction season.
Right. And for the public, a description here, so people understand what they're looking at in that photograph, is that's kind of squareish white building is the convenience store. And right across from it is where the existing pump station is, is surrounded by what I'm sure were shrubs that are now trees. And then...
Harbor vitis.
Right. And then down below it, it's a linden tree. And it's a lovely specimen of a tree. Unfortunately, engineering wise, they have decided that tree has to go. That, and if you can see a blue line in that photograph, that blue line is the water line, right, Tony?
Yeah, it's an eight-inch water main that serves Park Street.
Right. And then in the front there, there's kind of a white line that goes, runs parallel to Park Street, and that I believe is a gas line?
Yes, it's right under the, the shrub planting along Park Street.
Right, you kind of can't see it, but you can see it farther back.
Yeah.
But at any rate, it's kind of a boxed in scenario where, you know, if we don't take that particular tree down, then we're talking about having to move farther into Park Street and possibly taking down multiple trees. So that's kind of the dilemma that we're faced with. Nobody likes to take trees down, but unfortunately, we are very limited here in terms of the option.
If we cross over towards the skate park on the other side of the blue line water line, we're within the 200-foot radius of the river, which we can't be, we can't create it there.
Right.
Why not?
200 feet of the river.
It's a border vegetated wetland. I mean, it's the border, it's not, I mean...
You're putting a sewer pump station. It becomes much more costly. We're going to be within there.
The only way is shifting it back.
I mean, it's a tree.
Still have to get across those lines, okay? So you still have to, would be having to get past that water line. So you'd really have to go back up Park Street towards, you know, towards the trails.
The only other option, Tony, if you could just mention it, it is an option, is the removal and, or doing a bypass. And what we'd have to have for generators and plus, it would be a significant cost increase. We could just...
So, you know, at town meeting, the town voters approved around $728,000 for the project to be funded through the sewer department through a low-interest loan. And, you know, we never invited the, the idea of ever terminating the existing station while constructing the new one in the same spot. It would just be, it would put the cost out of reach for the sewer department to...
What does that mean, out of reach?
The amount of money that we, was approved to borrow would never cover the cost.
But what, but what would be the cost is my question, if we had to go back to the voters. The reason I'm asking isn't so much to save one tree. It's because, you know, a lot of folks spend a lot of time and effort protecting the viewscapes of the approaches to town. That's why over at Four Corners and 183 and 102, we've got that land preserve. And as you approach town here, you've got a gorgeous tree, and we're talking about replacing it with a sewer pump plant, right on the corner, that's going to be visible... And as you approach town here, you've got a gorgeous tree, and we're talking about replacing it with a sewer pump plant, um, right on the corner. It's going to be visible until new trees grow up around it, I presume, similar to the existing one. And I, and I, I'm not, I'm not making a case that we should spend an extra half a million dollars to protect a tree, but I am a little bit concerned that the, that the, you know, the views as we enter town are preserved the way it has been the policy and the priority of the town for like the last 50, 75 years.
Well, I get your point, Patrick, but I don't know if you're familiar with driving into town from the south and as you grow, as you cross the town, it's a river.
I've done it once or twice.
Okay, so next time you do, when you cross the bridge just north of the train station, look to your right, and there's a row of pine trees there that totally, um, you know, distinguish the view that you can't even see. You can't see that Park Street Pump Station currently. It's only moving like 45 yards to the, to the west.
Right.
Right. Not to mention, was any landscaping involved in that, the estimate? And did, did we assume that we would be obviously landscaping around it just like we did with the old one?
Absolutely. We planned to plant whatever the town would like us to plant for, for a buffer around the existing station. And will we place the existing tree with anything that the Park and Rec would recommend?
That sounds good. Much as I hate to cut the tree down financially and just everything, I would make a motion that we allow them to cut the tree down to proceed with their project.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Hi Chuck.
Hi Roxanne.
Hi Patrick.
Keep moving, Tony.
Just so you know, the Sewer Commission voted last week to, uh, we had a discussion at our meeting, and, you know, we, you know, we all love the trees of Stockbridge, but once in a while, one does stand in the way and...
Yeah.
You know, what are you going to do?
Right, well, that tree has also seen some damage in the past. There's a big section of it, that it lost a huge section of it at some point, and it's trimmed pretty significantly for the power lines. So as much as it's a beautiful tree, it's not pristine right now.
And what you guys, just procedurally to go over what you voted tonight, was to support the removal of the tree.
Right.
The tree warden will have to hold a tree hearing, because the tree is not dead.
Right.
Doesn't meet one of the six criteria for him to take down the tree without a hearing. So we will now work to post a hearing, hold a hearing, a separate hearing with the tree warden over this issue. But we have support for both the selectmen, the town offices, the water and sewer commissioners, and the directors of sewer.
So any of you out here tonight attending, just know that there will be another hearing about the tree. So if you have real strong feelings about that particular linden tree, that would be the time to express them. Alright, thanks, Tony.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Do you want to, would you entertain maybe pushing off the Curtisville discussion a week?
A what?
Pushing off the Curtisville discussion. I'd like Chuck to be part of it, and, you know, I'm just asking.
Are you staying with us for the Curtisville Bridge discussion, Chuck?
If we can push it all like that.
You want to wait on that?
Do we wait? No, that's nothing.
I mean, it's going to be very brief, because this is just a matter of, we just need to move forward on this.
Okay.
Alrighty, so Curtisville Bridge, we wanted to review the status and the existing plans and information, and this was done in 2015 by Forsight Engineering. So there is a plan that was created, and no action has been taken on it at this point. So, Mike, if you can pull up some of the images. And basically, what was designed at that point in time, we're going to obviously have to get another cost estimate. I believe it came in around $1.7 million. But the entire look of this and the wing walls is to take the approach that we will have a modern bridge that will look antique. In other words, the wing walls and the bridge itself will be new construction, two-code, but be faced with the stones that are there. So in other words, the wing wall, cement would be poured for the wing wall, and then stones can actually be placed in that concrete to make it look more historic. So it would retain an archway that is stone and the facing would be stone. And I think there's one diagram in there. I think you just went by it. Oh, right there. That's, that would be the reconstruction. So it's just a matter of bringing this up and...
We haven't endorsed this specific approach yet.
Right, no.
No, no, but that this does exist, and should we pursue this? And I think that we definitely have to take some action on the Curtisville Bridge. It's been way too many years that it's been out of service. It's creating a lot of additional traffic on Trask Lane and Willard Hill Road. So we now have moved the utilities, because this bridge is in such poor condition. It's truly hazardous, and people should not even think about wanting to walk across it. It's completely hazardous. So it could fail at any point.
Do we have any concerns about some historical, Mass Historical Commission money we took that...
So this study was actually done with Mass Historical money at that point.
I thought that required us to...
You have to get permission from Mass Historical Society for anything that you're going to do. So some of the things that were being proposed, this is my understanding, we need to get this up, this plan updated, was using the existing stones, but setting it into a cement wall. But you would set it so the stones stick out about four inches from the cement in the back. This was me speaking to the engineers at Forsight. That would create, using the original stones, but it'd be in a poured wall. But when you're looking at it, you'd see the stones, because they'd be sticking out four inches from the poured cement. Those would be your wing walls. Then you'd be creating a facade, but behind the facade would be a Chapter 85 bridge. And if you're going to put cars over, you have to build a modern bridge to 85 standard.
Yeah.
So it's balanced between the two, and we're not ready to discuss what's, what we can or can't. This would be, if we want to move ahead with, just right now, just re-engaging with Forsight, looking at this as an option, and then further discussing it as we go along, because, you know, you can't build a modern bridge. You have to build to Chapter 85 standards.
I just, my, my only issue, and of course I want to go ahead with it, is on every step of the design, I want the Stockbridge Oral Commission involved. So if we're going to talk about doing a facade, if we're going to talk about, you know, because there was a railing there, too. Is that part of the facade, or are we only talking about below, below the guardrails?
It's actually utilizing and restoring. Like, a couple of them were damaged, but utilizing the original posts, the original...
I just feel like we have a group that specializes in thinking about this stuff, and I would like to get them involved in, in analyzing.
Something that we have to really put on the front burner and have something ready for next annual town meeting.
Good.
Right.
Agreed.
Alright.
It really is finding a balance between historical and Chapter 85 standards, so.
I get that. I just want, I want everybody to have, not have a say, but have at least input.
Input, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, that's why we're trying to get this started and kicked off. So I'll get in touch with Forsight, talk to them about updating this plan, and coming in and doing a presentation of, a thorough presentation of what actually is being proposed, getting us all back up to full speed on this, and getting this moving forward.
Right, great, thank you. Alright, Chuck, I think you're off the hook.
Okay. Thanks.
Have a good time.
I'm in favor of trick or treat, so pass it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
See you later. Alright, um, and next is a discussion of NOMCAG and the possibility of using downtown parking for winter lights. And that is actually Town Hall parking.
Yes.
So...
I think he's, uh...
Expecting...
I believe here he comes.
So he's here?
Yeah, he was coming down. I texted a little...
Who's he?
Brian from the hotel.
Oh, good. Brian Cruij.
Hi.
There you are.
Good, how are you?
So Michael, did you want to give us the update on this? It's...
Yeah.
Was his brainchild. It was Michael Keneil's brainchild.
Me and Brian got together discussing, um, so a couple of months ago, there was some discussion between the town and NOMCAG about parking over there. They were looking at the, behind the cemetery, and then what options were available. And me and Brian met, we started talking about it, and one of the ideas that we just brainstormed was, why during winter lights, when most of the downtown is closed, couldn't we try to use downtown parking as a location for the winter lights, and then shuttle people up to NOMCAG? This would draw people into our downtown. We don't necessarily think it would be a big help this year, but it's the possibility that if this was to work logistically, could this be something during the winter that is drawing people in, we get people into the downtown during those festival nights? Could it be something that could be a benefit to both NOMCAG and the town doing this? In those discussions, we realized that NOMCAG would need some dedicated parking for those events. And that's where we started talking about, could Town Hall be that dedicated parking? And then the spillover parking would be along the main street. Now, since the festival is pretty much starts at 4:30?
Yes.
Please, Brian, just jump in if I misstate it.
Sure.
So 4:30, first people arriving are between 3:30 and 4:00, and this is happening after Thanksgiving through January. And during those timeframes, the downtown tends to have closed down by those hours. So we think it would be a way of just testing this year. This would definitely be a test year to try this, see if it's something that works. Create a, we were talking about the possibility of creating a shovel location near the post office, so you get people walking toward the main street, that eventually this is, if it was something that would work, that we could look at trying to tie in the downtown businesses and the rest is something that would happen. I did reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, and there were some people concerned about parking along their businesses and that. But during the time of the year that we're talking, we think this would be a, a good thing to try. And this would be simply a trial year. We don't have all the details. We're trying to figure out how this would work, but we do think that it's just an idea of, instead of them parking up that Marion Fathers and just shuttling down from there, where there's really no benefit to having a park up there, because everything's pretty much just closed at that time, this would be drawing into the downtown. And we just think it's, it just intrigued both of us as an idea that we just brainstormed. And we just think it's worth, I wanted to bring it to your guys' attention, it's something to just try.
Right.
Brian, is there anything I missed there that you would like to?
Uh, I don't think so. So I do have Marion Fathers, I've been talking to them as Plan B as well. So we have a, a day before Thanksgiving, so we open the day after Thanksgiving, so Friday, the 26th. And then the Saturday prior to that, we have a member preview day, which is kind of the same volume of people that we would normally have. So we would have a one-day kind of test run before we really opened it, you know, to the general public for a full weekend, that following weekend. Have a chance to kind of see how it works, iron out any kinks, try it out that following weekend. For any reason, we have to change course, or it's just not working. I think Marion Fathers would allow us to, you know, to pivot to using their lot up there. And we'll just, we're letting people know as they buy tickets, tickets go on sale this week. So we're going to take it weekend by weekend. They're getting an information now, being like, please watch your email, we'll send parking instructions to you closer to the event date.
You're talking about a shuttle bus, so...
Yes, the shuttle. The whole thing is, we have to have a shuttle from somewhere, just because...
Better watch.
What would be the route of the shuttle bus?
What's that?
What's the route of the shuttle bus?
Uh, so it depends on where that is. So right now, uh, we've been experimenting with this now, too, right? So the shuttle bus, we're running onsite. We're having people enter at 16, uh, next to 16 Church Street, kind of at the cemetery entrance. People are directed toward a park there, and the shuttle runs the loop up to NOMCAG, and then back down the barn drive, coming back out further down Church Street.
Yeah.
And we've been doing that, which has been working out fine. We would probably keep that same path. So it would come down, out on Church Street, come into town, turn right at the red line intersection, left onto Elm Street, stop at the post office, and then head back towards Church Street from there.
We have heard some pushback on the Church Street route, and it would be great, just because it seems like there's a lot less houses on the Prospect Hill route. It might be better for neighborly relations to sort of put the shuttle traffic up Prospect Hill if it's possible. I don't know if you saw that email today?
We received one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we received one.
Right.
So that might be another option. I have a couple of questions. I mean, one is, what is the typical volume on any of these given nights? And what's the duration of stay typically, if you know?
Sure, so we encourage people to stay an hour, and that's, we're pretty, Pumpkin Show runs a little over that, just because the weather's really nice and, like today, October. The sun starts to go down, and people sit and watch that show as well. So it's, it can kind of span a little bit long within that. Winter lights, we see people are usually staying 45 minutes to an hour.
Okay.
We get about, uh, we control the volume of tickets, so we'd like to see it be between 500 and 600 tickets a night. And that's, we sell them in increments of 15 minutes. So, you know, what we would do is we would start low, see how that capacity works out, and then build up from there. And that's kind of how we do it. Whenever we try a new parking pattern or traffic pattern, you know, just add as we, you know, where we see the opportunity, rather than having to back into, trying to back into a slow one. Well, it's always harder to take tickets away.
Okay, but at any given point, I mean, how many cars are we talking about being parked at the same time?
So if we are allowing, so our average is about 2.3 visitors per, per purchase, right? So that's the average size.
250 cars.
Right.
You know, so if we're allowing, say, 50 people every 15 minutes, that would be about 25 cars.
Okay.
A little bit less than that, about 20, between 15 and 20.
Right, but that's a one, yeah, over the course of a night, it's about 250. Folks are going to park somewhere.
Correct, yeah, it'd be about 250 cars.
Okay, and we have, what, just under 70 here?
Right.
You know, and obviously, it's a time when Town Hall is not occupied. No one's here, no one's working.
Yeah.
Typically, this is an empty parking lot. And I see that, in my opinion, I think that business owners in downtown should probably be happy about this, because the more we draw people into downtown, the more potential business they can have. Now, many of these businesses may not be open in the evening, and that's their prerogative, but they might want to take advantage of it.
Sure, and I, I, they, they might want to stay up a little later or something, but, you know, I think, the concerns I think you'll hear are, one, December is after the summer months. December is the number one month for the gift shop-oriented retail establishments we have, and they do a lot of business in December. So, you know, but then again, this is starting pretty late in the day. You know, like, what, 4:30, you said? You know, so, or, you know, maybe the parking starts at 4:00. That's one thing, you know, you might reach out to, you know, the folks, the folks in the Muse and, you know, the general store, and just get their take on it, or at least let them know, you know, I think after a year, you'll know whether it has a net benefit or not. The only, only other group is that, you know, that in the holidays, people go out to dinner a little more, so there's also the question of parking for the local restaurants. But, you know, we're not talking about the parking on Main Street. You're talking about the parking over here, right?
Parking here.
We're talking about trying to use this as much.
Use this lot.
We think there would be some spillover into the street, but because of, most of it is going to be happening from 4:30 on into the evening.
Right.
We, we, we don't think there'd be, and it is a try. It is...
I certainly think that this, this facility here is a fantastic idea. Kudos to both of you, you know. Yeah, maybe not parking in front of the red line to the country store, but maybe they want that, too, because there's gift shops, and they'll, people will be walking by and shopping, who knows?
I spoke to this guy, Ryan, about it, and just let them know that this was something we're thinking about. You know, we usually do a package with them anyway, so, um, you know, they were on board. They were all for it. They thought it was, you know, great, and, you know, they've got parking kind of tucked away here and there, too, so, and they were very, you know, excited about the opportunity, because more people down there are at that time of the year, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's, again, it is a trial. I can, you know, and I think it's something, too, where if it just doesn't work, we can always, again, move up the hill, but, you know, as Mike was saying, it's, you know, we've got this volume of people coming here, you know, every day. If it's a benefit to the town, I would much rather you guys take that than just having them up in the parking lot at Marion Fathers.
Oh, yeah, I, I really agree, and I think that it encourages them to take advantage of other commercial enterprises that are in town. You know, if you have people walking around, they're going to say, hey, it's charming here, it's lovely, let's take a little walk, especially when the, you know, like you said, when the weather is good. They may take... weather is good, they may take a walk up Main Street. And they're gonna, they have the possibility of stopping in all these various places. And I think that, yeah, businesses can benefit, and it's a test, let's try it and see if it helps.
Just to reiterate though, you know, when you're parking at the Marion's, I never heard any complaints in that neighborhood area. When you're shuttling people from, from, you know, the, uh, that, those parking areas to your place, uh, if the shuttle changes the route, it's gonna become an issue. I will happily predict, I'm not happily, I, I, I think the more we can keep the routes similar to what they were in the Marion era, the better off, you know, community relations.
So, the problem with, and the kind of reason we're kind of trying a different way is because there's nowhere for the bus to turn around on Prospect Hill Road. It has to do at a, a turnabout there on, is it Old School Road, right, or it's, or old, next to, uh, Tavidian's?
Yeah.
You know, a road that comes downhill, they do a turnabout and comes around, and it's, it's just kind of.
It's dark too, neither is perfect.
And this way, you know, the shuttle's coming, there won't be any cars doing the loop. It would just really be kind of the shuttle, I think. So, I, you know, I hear those concerns and I, you know, it's, it seems to be going pretty well over there now. I think that, you know, it's.
Well, and particularly if they're coming from Church Street and going towards Main Street, and you're only, you're talking a really short distance there.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, it's, it's, it's less than a mile.
Right, oh, yeah. There's, I think it's less than a half mile. It's maybe a couple tenths of a mile.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the key would be, this is a trial.
Right.
See how it works, evaluate again, what worked, what didn't, what will we have to adjust. I also think even with the commercial business, it's gonna be a little hard for them to commit to maybe staying open that, but if we can show that if through a trial it does work, we thought this is something within a couple of years could really grow to something that could be happening in our downtown. So, that was, that was just a thought and that we wanted to just at least see if the select board was in support of it, and then we'll move ahead and we'll try to iron out the details. And a little bit will be a little trial and errors we go along, we have to understand that, so.
Right.
And I think too, you know, if it does evolve and it works, you know, happy to like email, you know, because we do reach out to all the people that are coming ahead of time, you know, we're, we can include, you know, coupons or, you know, links to reservation sites, discounts for any store that wants to offer them.
Have you talked to Barb Zanetti from the Chamber? Yeah?
Um, not yet.
Okay, because I think that would be a great idea, that you, you know, put your head together with Barb and say, hey, we can get some bang for the buck here, you know, that you can give it a boost.
I didn't know she'd reach out to Barb and have her ask about the businesses. So, I think it's something. Uh, Mr. Hart had his hand up as far as, I think he wanted to.
John Hart, did you want to say?
Hi, um, being somebody who actively and aggressively markets the town of Stockbridge and is somewhat frustrated over the years in that there comes a time of year when everything seems to stop in Stockbridge business-wise, except for the Red Lion Inn and Michael's at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. And I really think that this opportunity that Brian is giving us here could be something that Stockbridge has an event. Well, we have the Halloween event going on now, but we also have this event coming. We can plan for it. But I really think the business owners need to be, um, persuaded maybe to open their doors until like 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night when the event is over with. But I think, I'm totally in support of this. I am totally in support of parking in the town of Stockbridge so that these people can walk in the door and say, oh, look at this, or go into the, the, the general store in Stockbridge and, you know, pick up an ice cream cone or whatever. But I mean, this is important, and, and, and I am in total support of what's being proposed here.
Good, great. Thank you.
Good.
Anyone else have any comments? Michael, any hands up?
Oh, Hugh has his hand up.
Oh, hi, Hugh. Hugh Page. Go ahead.
How you doing?
Here you go, hi.
The only thing I will trump in on, I don't see it being a major thing, is, you know, how late do these things plan on going? You know, only during the, the larger snow events would be the only thing that would, would, uh, you know, I, I, I just want to throw them in the mix, you know?
Okay.
It snows at Christmas?
Not the last couple of years, but. So, so we, uh, the last ticket that we sell is 7:30. So, it goes to 8:30, but we try to have that be our close of the property, right? So, 8:30, 9:00 is usually we have the last people out. If a major snow event, either forecasted or one that occurs, you know, we tend to close down just because, for those of you who are familiar with NOMCAG, it is the side of a mountain, it is not, it is tricky walking around on a good day. You add any ice or snow in there, and you got people falling all over the place. So, we tend to err as much on the side of caution as we can when we have to deal with any sort of weather, particularly snow and ice.
Okay.
And Hugh, I think part of, as we try to answer any other questions that are happening, me, you, and Brian can also get together to discuss that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I also agree that this is a pretty good opportunity, you know, we shouldn't drop the ball with it, you know, I, I agree, so. Yeah, the, the snow is my only concern, so.
Okay, thanks, Hugh.
Has Mrs. Cho weighed in? Did you board or anything, you know?
I don't know.
John, did, want to add something?
Yeah, I did. And that is, um, to give Brian the credit he's due, I think that what NOMCAG is doing with Thanksgiving and Christmas is becoming the off-season tanglewood for Stockbridge. And I am, you know, I can't say enough good things about what they're doing.
Thanks, John, that's nice. Appreciate that. We're having fun up there, you know, it's nice.
All right. Well, so, I, we're in agreement, this is, we're going forward, okay?
Okay.
Wonderful, good luck.
We'll talk and, uh, we'll start getting busy on those details.
Yep.
All right, thanks so much, you guys.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, good night.
Take care. Okay, next up, um, Michael Canales wants to talk about the Town Council use policy, and it's just a minor tweak, but Mike can explain how you guys approach this.
Uh, just needed to update, uh, this was put in, I think it was a little over a year ago, you had one put in by your interim. Mark Weber had put in just signifying, um, who has direct contact to the Town Council. Town Council also likes to know exactly who has direct contact. So, as always, the Board of Selectmen themselves are, um, the ones who contract for our city, our town solicitor. So, you guys are always able to reach out. Then myself, the Building Commissioner, Treasurer, Town Clerk, Principal Assessor, Police Chief, Town Moderator, and our rest of the River Representative, which currently is Steve Shatz, will be able to directly contact them within, for subjects within their area. So, obviously, it's within the duties of their job.
Yeah.
Uh, the individual boards would be the Community Preservation Commission, when they annually submit to Town Council a review of all their projects. Uh, and then we have the Conservation Chair, Planning Board, Board of Health, and Zoning Board of Appeals. These are the typical ones that need to get in contact with Town Council frequently, or they need to get access in sometimes time constraint issues. All other boards, commissions would request through my office to reach Town Council. So, you know, if the Finance Committee needed to speak to Town Council, Jay would just get in touch with me, say, hey, Mike, I need to talk to Town Council on this. I would not interfere other than call Donna and have Donna get directly in touch with the Chair of that board. So, I wouldn't act as, I'm not gonna be the, it's not gonna be a two-party, you know, a two-step communication, we'll be putting them directly in. But it is just so our council knows who are the ones that are directly calling them that they should be addressing, who else can contact them. And then, of course, there's a matter of mass general law that anybody that thinks that something unethical or illegal is going on can always contact Town Council under that, and that's Mass General Law, uh, 268A, Section 22.
That's any town employee.
That's any town employee can contact if they feel as though something. So, this just clarifies, it doesn't, um, just clarifies, like I said, who's able to directly contact on their own, and then what mechanism is for all other employees and boards to do. And then, of course, the select board as the ones that contract with them always have a right individually or collectively to contact the, the town solicitor.
Okay. You have any comments or questions about this? Jay, do you have a comment? You're Chairman of the Finance Committee, so, okay.
I have a few.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's kind of, my assumption is, this is based on, like Mike talked about, the immediate need. In other words, there are certain boards and committees that might have an immediate need to talk to Town Council, but for instance, Finance Committee, if, they don't have a pressing immediate need, um, it's, it's a phone call and to Mike. And I'm assuming now the Fire Chief is not listed here, so the Fire Chief would fall under the same category where, because typically he has another resource available to him. Um, just like, you know, sewer water.
The state Fire Marshal.
The state Fire Marshal.
Right.
So, that's usually, you know, there are some of these, um, commissions or like the Fire Chief who have other resources that are available to them that they're more likely to use first out of the gate. They might have a follow-up question for our Town Council, in which case they talk to Mike.
Oh, jeez.
Anyway, so your questions are.
I'm getting tired, sorry. Um, yeah, I have a few questions. Uh, one, um, there's a question that came up with the performance standards at CONCOM regarding sort of covered services versus services that are not covered by the retainer. I believe that anyone, any service not covered by the retainer should go through you.
Yes, Town Council, Town Council itself would, anytime there is an additional cost, they automatically reach out to myself because then I have to take.
It's an appropriation and we gotta do it, right?
Right. And you, the only additional fund for legal counsel is under the select board's expenses. So, you're the only ones.
So, now, my second question is this, um, in the event that Jay calls versus in the event that, uh, let's see who's on our list, Ron calls. If, if Ron's calling direct, do you get CC'd on all advice?
Yeah.
No matter who calls?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah.
And then do you use discretion on, is the, is advice ever a matter of public record? Is it?
It's not a matter of public record.
It's confidential information.
It is. Now, if it's.
Confidential to you and the Chairman or you, the Chairman and the select board?
Legal counsel and the Town. Yeah, it's, it's, it would be between, well.
I want to know kind of who has access to, you know, if a, if a Chair requests information, because now we're creating, not really gatekeeper, but a little bit for some of the Chairs and not for others.
This was in effect before.
I, I'm not arguing, I'm, now, I'm just trying to now understand the policy.
Right, right.
Not challenge whether the current versus the past one.
If a Chairman asks for information that's within his, so, if the Conservation Committee had a specific question, they requested legal advice, then once that, like, advice is given to the, you know, the Chairman says, I'll, I'll get a legal opinion, once they go back to the board and give that legal opinion to the board, now it becomes a public record.
Is that a requirement for other boards? If a Chairman asks for advice, are they required to then share the advice with the rest of the board members?
If they are requesting it on behalf of an issue in front of the board, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, if they request it as a group, so, it, somebody could make a motion that they want to get, um, some legal advice from Town Council, and they compose that, they vote on it. If that vote carries, then the Chair has that obligation to go and get that piece of information through, get that.
But that vote is not required, that vote is not required for the Chair to go.
And they can go on their own.
They can go on their own.
And then share or not share?
Right, yeah.
Right.
I don't love that, but okay.
Yeah, there's really not a way around it.
Yeah, all right. No, I know, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand myself. Uh, so, if, and now we're just devil's advocate, if we're not, if you're not really being a gatekeeper for the other Chairs, why not just let them, you're gonna CC them and get away?
Because if you think that we have so many different committees, subcommittees, other committees, even legal counsel wants to know who are the ones that can reach out to them without checking to see, should I be talking to who or what? So, this is very typical standard operating procedures in almost all communities, that you send it to those groups that need frequent legal advice. A lot of times zoning, almost anything is going before, like the Zoning Board of Appeals or something, a lot of times those get run past legal counsel. Or there's an urgency in their direct need. So, those would fall to some of those other departments that are listed. So, I think that this just identifies those that need it in a rush.
Right.
And then the other method would allow, and like I said, especially for any retainage item, I, I'm not acting as the gatekeeper, I'm not gonna be the person that's gonna pass along that information. Like I said, I use the Finance Committee as an example, would be I would have the lawyer, whoever best represents, and it could be Donna, it could be Jenny, it could be different lawyers that we deal with based on the subject, get back to that Chairman and speak to them directly. But all it does is allow, so our, our, we don't have to keep a massive list of every committee we're starting, who's allowed, who's not allowed. This just says, here they are, we inform them of who's our, who's the current Chairs, and then when they change, we inform counsel. And then they're aware of who they should just be acting right away on, and then who they need to.
And, and my only other question, this is based on your experience, I have no experience in this. In, in your experience, are there sensitivities, sensitive topics that some of these other Chairs might hesitate to sort of broach with you, that they might want to get advice from Town Council on? You know, if they were able to call them directly? I mean, I, I don't know. I'm just, you know, are we, are we discouraging use of, of the resource by?
No, I think we're actually encouraging the use.
Okay, good.
On the retainer, and it's just a, it's just a, a step.
But you're not requesting that they spill their guts.
No, no.
They don't have to, they don't have to go into detail about what it's about. They can just say they have a need, such and such question, and what kind of a category it might fall under.
All right, kind of.
Which gives indication of which attorney is the best to actually address.
The written response is gonna see it anyway, so, yeah, okay.
But, because I've had, I had that in the past when I was first elected, that, you know, it was like I was worried about there was some gatekeeping going on. So, it's like, no, I don't think that's what you're proposing at all.
They want to, and then, of course, if the question goes to any one of our lawyers and they go, that's beyond the retainage, then immediately triggers from them a request back to, uh, to, to me to make sure that the town through the select board is supporting the spending of additional legal funds.
Then that's where we come in.
And those are just checks and balances.
Oh, okay.
To make sure that we're handling everything correctly.
All right. Want to vote on this? Are you going with for Trump?
Well, I don't know, that it requires a vote.
Yeah, it's just, it's a policy that I will be distributing out to all the under.
It's just a policy.
But I, I don't think it hurts for, yeah, I, I would. I think it would be better if you guys did approve it.
If we did a vote?
I do think.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve it.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I don't think.
And it also can be changed at any point if we have to go along.
This is not a dramatic.
There's a couple of typos I saw, do you mind if I just?
Yeah.
There's nothing, you know, substantive. There's nothing, you know, substantive. I'll, I'll get them to you.
All right.
Okay. Um, so then the very last topic, which Chuck hearted commenting on, is the trick or treat discussion. So I did speak with Charlie Kenny, uh, within the last several days. And he didn't, wasn't speaking for the entire Board of Health, but he was giving his opinion. And apparently, I think Jim Willis at Treetown Health is of the same opinion that we are past the big concern that had prompted the mask mandate indoors and that they feel this is basically, we're going back to a normal scenario. And so, and I have, personally, I have complete confidence that, um, our residents have good judgment and they will make appropriate decisions based on their own needs and their own concerns and their level of risk. And if people are going to be participating in trick or treating, obviously they're probably going to have their porch lights on, they're going to have their outdoor lights on. If people are not going to be giving out candy or wanting to participate in trick or treat, then clearly, don't have your lights on, don't answer the door. So it's pretty simple and I think that everybody should just enjoy Halloween and the kids should have a chance to get out and, and kick their heels up and show off their costumes, so.
My one concern is that I think the select board needs to evaluate the quality of the treats and that anybody who wants to give any out should give us some. You know, you drop them off right here at 50 Main Street, uh, you know.
That's right.
Uh, no, I have no problem with that.
And trick or treat hours.
And I don't know.
What have we done in, we didn't do them last year.
No, we don't do hours. I don't know that we have done hours.
Have you done hours?
Not since I've been on the select board. I mean, it's typically when it gets dark, you know, it's starting to get dark.
I defer to Mike, like you said.
And that's when the kids start coming in. So I don't know, we didn't do a lot here.
I just wasn't sure if you set hours, some communities set the hours of trick or treats. Hours don't.
And I think it was always limited. Do you remember Jay? Does anyone out there remember what the hours were several years ago?
Jay, you wore an Almond Joy or a mom's guy.
Anita, Marie, anybody? Georgia. Georgia, if you're here.
Georgia, she probably would know.
When it gets dark.
Yeah.